The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of April 6, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not listed on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on this afternoon's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are also given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify the agenda item on which they wish to speak will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
No public speaker cards have been received.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we also have not received any speaker cards for items not listed on the agenda.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports item 3B. Per staff request, this item, the proposed charter amendments for the November 2022 general election, will be heard before item 3A.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, good afternoon. You may know that this is the third time that this particular topic has come before you, at least from the city attorney's office. And this afternoon, what we would like to do is Ashley Zambro, deputy city attorney, is going to go through most of the PowerPoint that you're going to see on your screen today. And then at the end, I have some closing comments and go through some next steps and open it up for some questions. So with that, Ashley, please take it away.
Thank you, Ms. Zambro. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So I'd like to start by briefly recapping where we left off with you at the last council meeting. Oops. As you will recall, at the last meeting at March 16th before you, we brought this document, which I have up on the screen. It was a single piece of paper that reflected the proposed amendments based on feedback and direction that we've been given thus far regarding a proposed ballot measure to take to the voters that would amend three pertinent sections of the city charter. By way of summary, that is Section 194 regarding the selection of the fire chief, Section 229, which is selection of the police chief, and Section 230, which is titled Promotions: Qualifications for Promotion, which also pertains to promotions in the police department. Now, the reason that that Section 230 has been included, as you may recall, is that there is actually currently in the charter language in that section that also governs a selection of the police chief that has to be amended in this ballot measure. At the last meeting, we also brought before you three proposed ballot labels. Those are the questions that are actually printed on the ballot for voters to decide. The ballot label has to be 75 words. It has to accurately summarize what the amendments or proposed changes are that you're presenting the voters. Now, while there would only be one ballot question printed on the ballot for the voters to consider, there are, of course, different options with how you choose to summarize those amendments. And so we had presented some differing ways to propose those questions to the voters in the negative and the affirmative, sort of a hybrid, to elicit some discussion and feedback and allow the council an opportunity to see what that might look like for the voters. You will recall that there was no real consensus from the council on one of those proposed questions largely because of what I have highlighted in yellow here before you. The second half of the question, regardless of version that we put together for you, deals with the eligibility for promotion for positions other than the chief of police in the police department. And the reason that that language was included in the question is really focused on this one sentence in Section 230 of the charter. It's the first sentence in the second paragraph of Section 230, which states that no member of the police department shall be eligible for promotion to any position other than that of chief of police until he shall have had three years of experience as a regular paid peace officer, one year of which must have been served in the Bakersfield Police Department immediately preceding the date of his promotion. Now, that one sentence has nothing to do with selection of the police chief. And as a result, we were trying to summarize that as a separate issue in the same ballot question that was presented to the voters. So the first part of the question dealt with the issue of selecting the fire and police chief, and the second part of the question dealt with this one sentence in Section 230. So where we left off in the discussion was the city attorney's office received some council feedback to explore the ability to separate those two issues into two questions that would be presented to the voters, to see if that was perhaps a little bit clearer for voter determination. One thing to point out is that two questions means two boxes on the ballot, which means two measures on the ballot. So we explored that option. What Jenny just passed out to you is a sample Measure A and a sample Measure B. We explored this idea of what would it look like if we did choose to put two measures on the ballot for the voters to consider. It would look like this. Now, granted on the screen, it's quite small font, but make sure you have the sheet in front of you that has the sample Measure A and the sample Measure B. It has a page one at the bottom, so you're looking at the right side. That's what that would look like. You would have one measure on the ballot that included the proposed amendments to 194, 229, and 230, but it kept that sentence in, that sentence I've been highlighting for you to consider. So that the question was simply put, shall the Bakersfield City Charter be amended to remove the requirement that the fire chief and police chief be appointed from within their respective departments? Then you would simultaneously have a second measure that came to the voters that was this sample Measure B that had that same Section 230 presented to the voters but striking out that sentence. Now, once you see it in front of you, you can see that that's a bit confusing to understand from a voter perspective because you are basically placing two alternative redline versions of the same section in the charter for voters to determine differently. For that reason, the city attorney's office actually does not recommend putting two separate measures on the ballot simultaneously to address this issue because you are left with competing redline amendments to Section 230 that would go in the voter pamphlet. And so voters, I think, would be understandably confused about which version of that section would take effect if those were to pass. So what we did is we kind of went back to the drawing board, and we now have two options for the council to still consider. If you flip over that piece of paper, you will see on the back an Option 1 and an Option 2 because the city attorney's office recommendation is really to pick one measure that will go on the ballot. And the way we address this question, there's really two main options. Option 1 is, despite the fact that this is not consistent with council's prior feedback, is to leave that sentence in. So this yellow highlighted sentence in Section 230 would remain in the charter as is. We would not strike it out. And what that would leave you with is a very simple proposed ballot question for voters to decide. Shall the Bakersfield City Charter be amended to remove all requirements that the fire chief and police chief be appointed from within their respective departments? Now, of course, there's some pros and cons to this approach. Some positives of taking this approach is that it leaves one major substantive issue for the voters to decide, which is selection of the fire and police chief. It's a shorter and simpler ballot question. It follows the traditional single-subject rule. That's actually a rule that applies to initiatives. There's some more flexibility when you're proposing charter amendments, but in general, with the initiative process, there is a rule that you aren't allowed to have multiple subjects within one ballot measure. But what we want to point out is that by leaving in this sentence regarding promotions within the police department, it imposes different minimum requirements for candidates promoting from within the police department than those coming from outside for positions other than chief of police. So by that, I mean that all positions lower than the chief of police, lateral candidates could come in regardless of needing to spend one year in the Bakersfield Police Department before you're eligible for promotion. Now, once they're in the department, everyone would be subject to the same rule, but leaving that language in does create that different minimum requirement. So alternatively, you have Option 2, which is consistent with the prior redline that council has expressed desire to place on the ballot, which completely strikes that entire paragraph. You would get rid of that sentence, but what it leaves you with is we have to think of how to perhaps separate out the issues within the same question that gets put on the ballot. So we played around with some language and wording to come up with perhaps a clearer way to address the two issues if there is a desire to still place this redline on the ballot for the voters. So the way that this is drafted right now for you to consider says, shall the Bakersfield City Charter be amended to remove all requirements that the fire chief and police chief be appointed from within their respective departments and allow all police officers to be eligible for promotion to positions other than police chief without requiring three years' experience, one year of which must be served in the Bakersfield Police Department immediately preceding the date of promotion? Now, that second piece of the question is very long and detailed. I've taken that straight from the language of that sentence, just so you can track why that's in there and why it's phrased that way. But you could, of course, play around with language. I think you're allowed up to 75 words. I think this is exactly 75 words. You could, though, rephrase the second part of that question to be a little bit more generic if that was desired. So for example, we could say for that second part, allow all police officers to be eligible for promotion to positions other than police chief without requiring prior experience in the Bakersfield Police Department. We feel that that would also be a sufficient way of phrasing that section. Again, there's pros and cons to this. Now, ultimately, if you were to strike that language, it results in a shorter and simpler charter section 230 concerning promotion of candidates. It reflects prior council feedback. That was a desire to just strike that language and leave a cleaner, shorter charter section. But of course, it combines the issues, and it is a longer ballot question than Option 1 for voters to decide. It's basically an all or nothing. So with that, our recommendations this afternoon are for the council to provide direction regarding which measure or measures are to be placed on the ballot, to provide feedback, if any, regarding the wording of the ballot question. I know we're presenting you with a lot of words and information. And then also, lastly, the issue of the argument.
So, thank you, Ashley. Before we kind of open it up for questions, just some kind of final thoughts. Councilmember Freeman, I know, is not here tonight. You may recall that the last time we met, he wanted us or encouraged us to get a focus group to talk about the different languages. And the city attorney's office, we did not convene any type of official focus group, but we did take the different languages, the different ballot measures that we had provided to you before, in the affirmative, in the negative, and the hybrid. And all of this went out, and I know for a fact that we talked to individuals between 18 and individuals in their 80s. And that is how we arrived, frankly, at Option Number 1 and the verbiage that was in there. It was a general consensus that that's how it should read, and it was very clear. So concurrent with your decision as to how to word the language and whether you want Option 1 or Option 2, again, the council also needs to decide, are you going to submit an argument? Are you going to submit an argument in favor? Are you going to submit an argument opposed? Or are you going to do as the city attorney is advising, and that is to remain neutral and not to submit an argument? Again, should you decide to submit an argument, we need to know that sooner than later. Why? Because then you're going to need to choose amongst you who's going to write that argument, how that argument is going to be phrased. It would have to be done in a public setting, which is all well and good, but again, we need to get moving here. We have a deadline, and so we need to work more time into the schedule in order for the council to do that. So just a little bit, as you can see on the PowerPoint, a little bit about arguments. We touched on this before. Arguments for or against must not exceed 300 words. Again, there is no requirement that the council draft an argument for or against. If there are multiple arguments for or against, the state has a priority of which argument the city clerk, the city clerk is our election official, which argument the city clerk shall pick. The city council has top priority, should you decide to do that. You can see that the second priority rests with individuals who are bona fide sponsors or proponents. That's generally with regard to initiatives. We don't have that in this case, so we would slip down to Number 3. Again, that would be a bona fide association of citizens. Our thought process there was that that would probably fall on one of the unions, BPOA, perhaps current tax. And if we did not receive an argument from any of the top three, then the city clerk would have the ability to choose an argument from an individual voter. And by the way, I have received calls from members of the public that would like to write an argument both for and against should we not have anyone in the top four. So tonight, I think we can go to the final slide here in terms of next steps. The city attorney's office has spent some time with the city manager's office, as well as with Kristi Tenter, your HR director. Both of them are going to reach out to the unions. And again, just kind of brief them where we are. You know, all of our discussions on this have been in open session. They are available on video. But again, to the extent that they have additional questions, both HR and the city manager's office has time now to reach out to the unions. We do need to bring some language back to you. My thought process is that we would come back at one of the May meetings. Again, I know that Councilmember Freeman is not expected to be at the first meeting, but again, we need some direction here on how that language is going to read. And again, we would typically put that in the resolution, whether the council wanted to make an argument for or against or not at all. So tonight, or this afternoon, it would be very helpful if you started, I know you did this last time, but if you kind of voiced some opinions on, you know, do you want Option 1? Do you want Option 2? Do you want us to go back to the drawing board again? If so, what would you like us to do? Because Ashley and I really need to better frame that administrative report when we come back to you in May. My preference would be to give you one or two menu items to select from as opposed to a whole selection. I think it makes it easier for the council. It certainly makes it easier for the community to kind of know where the council direction is so they can offer some additional public input on it. So with that, we're open for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. My opinion is stick with Option 1. That's really what our direction was from our stipulated agreement. And the conversation I've heard for years was, you know, we should be able to pick our fire chief and police chief from outside the departments. So I still think the language in Option 2 confuses the issue, and so I would recommend just going with Option 1. And my feeling is that, yes, the council should take a position and write something for the ballot measure.
If I may, Mayor, if I'd like to just further express that the council can certainly take a stance as opposed to writing an argument. So if you have a feeling one way or the other on that, that would be nice to know.
Explain that.
Sure. In other words, an argument, you would have the 300 words, right? But the stance would be very simplified, that the city council supports the measure to have fire and police appointed from outside.
Okay. I like the argument, if you want mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray.
So my question is, do we only have to address what our council member, Bob, said that we, do we have to address allowing the police officers to be eligible for promotion to positions other than police chief? Do we have to address that also, or is it mainly the police chief and fire chief that we're having to address?
That's correct, the latter. In other words, our agreement with the Department of Justice only requires that we put the charter amendment forward to allow the city manager to choose the outside on the police chief, not even the fire chief. It was our understanding from previous discussions with the council that in order to maintain parity, that the council wanted to also include the fire chief. If that is not correct, we would like to know that before we go too much further.
Well, I would agree with Bob that on Option 1, because the Option 2, I think, dilutes it, and that second bullet point, allow police officers and so forth, the way that's written is very confusing. Now, you did say something at the very end of your presentation that we don't have in writing, that simplified it, and I think for the public would be much better if we choose to bring both of those issues into one measure. But if we don't have to do that, it seems to me like simple is better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I have to say that sample Measure B is very confusing. To me, when I read that sentence, it says that you're eligible for promotion without requiring three years' experience, one of those being in the BPD. So that seems counterproductive.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, there is no doubt that the writers of this section, it's very confusing. But I do think that with the help of Kristi Tenter, I do think that we came up with simpler language. And when we come back in May, we can include the simpler language in there. And if you choose to go with it, great. And if you choose not to go with it, that's fine. I mean, if we just can narrow it down to the two options, I think that's simpler for the council to take a vote. But I agree with you. We all agree with you. It's poorly worded to begin with, and so then when you try to correct it and at the same time be transparent to the public as to what you're doing, it makes our job very difficult.
So we don't even need to address promotions in this or anything like that, correct?
We do not. That is correct. But we needed, again, I don't want to get too in the weeds here, but we needed to address, can you flip to that section, Ashley, with the standing vacancies?
Yes.
Please. See that second line there in 230? "The commissioner shall provide for promotion in the department on the basis of ascertained merit, and standing vacancies shall be filled by promotion." You may recall that we went through this, I think, the first time that we talked to you. That has to be stricken because, again, the position to chief of police would be a promotion. So when you say, do we have to deal with promotions? The answer is, we have to deal with promotions as it concerns the chief of police. We do not need to deal with promotions as it concerns that second paragraph.
Okay. So in that case, the first one, sample Measure A, is the most straightforward and easily understood. So that would be the way to go for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Parlier.
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, could I have you come down for a sec? While the chief is coming down, it sounds so far that my colleagues are leaning towards the first one. I'm in agreement with that, too. Looking at the second one, I think it's too convoluted, but I just want to get the expertise from the chief on a couple of topics, too. Thanks for coming over, chief.
Sure.
On that second one, first off, I want to say, just kind of frame it a little bit. Years ago, LAPD, you had basically the same style that we currently have. You had to promote within the department and include the chief. They changed that, and now they allow for potential candidates from outside the agency, but also internal candidates can compete also. But they didn't change anything for those lower ranks, and I think that's good. I think that could open a potential can of worms. But I've kind of heard it both ways, too, talking to a couple of folks within the department. I just want to get your impressions of what you think. I think we have great rank and file, first-line, second-line supervisors. And I don't know if that would help us to allow, you know, somebody else coming on from outside the agency. You know, I think we should, you know, stick with the fire chief and police chief, but I just want to get your opinion.
Mayor, Councilmember Parlier, thank you for the opportunity and the question. So you're referring, your question is solely related to the second paragraph, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's something that Kristi and I have talked to and talked about, and Jenny has as well. And it was sort of taking advantage of an opportunity, that should we ever find ourselves in a position where we lacked current command staff that had the necessary experience and skills and the things that we would desire for various management ranks, could we and should we entertain the possibility of having a police officer lateral into our department as a sergeant, as a lieutenant, as a captain? Many agencies do. And so that was the context of that conversation, in particular to the second paragraph, was while we're doing this review, should we consider taking advantage of this opportunity and put that question forward for that kind of a circumstance? And there is no right answer, in my opinion. There are pros and cons of all of these issues. And so if the council chooses certainly to keep it narrow and straight to the point, then I think that's a choice as well. But to, if you're asking my opinion on whether or not this is a good opportunity or not, it's difficult to answer, truthfully. And that's why we were approaching it in the way that we were, to open the door and allow the department to have this option in the future. But I also have picked up from what your conversations are today, it is very confusing to be able to provide that kind of direction and option for people to understand what we're doing.
Right. Has there been any communication with BPOA in their opinion on this?
Not specific to that in particular, that second paragraph, no.
Councilmember Parlier, if I may, I feel that I need to interrupt here. By simply eliminating standing vacancies in that first paragraph, the department and HR are going to be able to go to laterals, period, end of discussion, for everything within the department. The hiring of a lateral on the outside has nothing to do with that second paragraph. That second paragraph basically is the qualifications for an internal candidate to a position, excuse me, chief. So the standing vacancy, as soon as we strike that, and we need to strike that in order to accomplish what the Department of Justice is asking us to do, it automatically, automatically allows us to go outside for anyone within the Bakersfield Police Department. Would you please put up the highlighted language, please?
Yeah, put it up in your place.
I just want to make that very clear, so there is no misunderstanding. That yellow highlight only has to do with the qualifications for internal individuals. And the Department of Justice, no one has asked us to change that.
Okay. Just for clarification, Jenny, you're saying that with this, it's going to open for laterals regardless?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Even if we go with the first option, it's still...
Yes, sir, because I have to cross out that "and" standing vacancy. So go above that highlight, that 23010. "The commissioner shall provide for promotion in the department on the basis of ascertained merit." It's going to have a period there. "Standing vacancies shall be filled by promotion." That's coming out, period, end of discussion. Has to come out, right? Because otherwise, the promotion to chief of police has to come from inside. So in order to take, I have to take that out. I'm taking it out across the board. The only difference is on that, again, I'm repeating myself, but Ashley and I have been struggling, you know, with this for months now. That highlighted language is just what's the qualifications? If you're... If you're a police officer right now, and you want to elevate to detective, then you have to, you have to have three years of experience as a regular paid peace officer, one of which must have been served in the police department immediately proceeding. But I can lateral from LA, and you don't have to have that requirement. So, what I hear the council telling me is, it looks like the majority is saying option one is the way to go, and you're still going to be able to hire laterals from outside, but we're going to leave that highlighted language in there. So, as soon as you become a police officer within the city of Bakersfield, you need that MQ, you need those minimum qualifications if you want to come up, other than chief of police.
Okay.
I wish it were as easy as the fire department, but it's not.
Right, right. So, just the same, one more time.
Yes.
Hold my hand like a small child through this, Jenny.
Okay.
Okay.
This is good.
So, going back to my LAPD analogy.
Yes.
They can hire the chief from outside the agency, rank and file, still come up from within.
You can still come up from within. This is only, this is--
Well, meaning, meaning non-laterals.
Your question is what?
Meaning if you're a sergeant and you're an outside agency, you can't come over as a sergeant. If you want to test for lieutenant, you're from an outside agency, you can't come over.
Right now?
Right now.
Right now, you may not. That is correct. We do not take laterals outside of officers. That is correct. If this passes, HR and chief of police and the city will be able to take a lateral on every level within the police department.
No, I got that part.
Okay.
But I was referring back to other departments that don't necessarily have that, where you're still rank and file up through the ranks, you're still inter-promotional, and the chief is the head of the department and is allowed to be, you know, interviewed from outside the agency.
I think the answer is yes. I mean, at the end of the day, if option one passes, and you see 23010 exactly as it's written there with the red line, if the chief and HR and the city manager decide to do a promotional, and they decide to hold it only from within, they're able to do that. But they also have the flexibility of hiring from the outside.
Chief?
And the word promotion changes it all, right?
Pardon me?
And the, the changing of the promotion changes that, is what changes everything. Our ability to fill a vacancy would be able to lateral, fill it rather than by promotion as it said there. So, excluding that or striking that section will open that door for that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Because that is the definition in our charter of promotion. Promotion means from within. So, as soon as you strike, standing vacancies shall be filled by promotion. You are allowing yourself that flexibility. You may do it if you like, or you may choose not to do it.
Right. So, it would open it up to every position?
Correct.
Okay, Jenny. And there's no way per the charter to, that you feel to keep those rank and file promotions as is without, and still allow the chief to be promoted from or hired from outside the agency potentially, without striking that and opening up there, everybody?
Mayor, Councilmember Parlier, the direct answer to your question is yes, that's what I feel. But I will tell you this, in my conversations with the HR director, and by the way, she will be here in May to give a very factual presentation of the practical effects of both option one and option two. She will, she will talk to the unions and probably insert something within the MOU that says, if there's a substantial number of candidates internally, we will go internally as opposed to, as opposed to external. Again, we're getting a bit granular here, but that's always something that city manager and HR have the ability to do. But there is no way to do it strictly via the charter.
Well, of course, I'm supportive on the first option. But I just think, I'd like to hear a little bit more information, chief, or through HR, if they can reach out. I just don't want, I don't think this is going to be controversial, you know, initially going through the charter, even though you said there is going to be writings, both pro and con. But I don't necessarily want half your department standing outside saying they're against this either, so, or more. So, I just want a little more clarification on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with my colleagues. I think sample measure A in the ballot language is simple, as I stated before, the simpler the better, more straightforward. And I appreciate all the efforts of the city attorney's office to reach out to various folks and get their opinions, and I think that matters a lot. So, I appreciate the hard work in that. I'm concerned, though, that that second line where we struck, and standing vacancies shall be filled by promotion, that has larger implications than just the chief position. And I don't think that that is properly reflected in the ballot measure language. And so, I'd like this to see if we can address that in a future draft.
What do you, with all due respect, what is it that you would like it to address?
Well, the ballot measure speaks to the fire chief and the police chief.
Correct.
And from what I understand, what you had just described.
Yes.
That the standing vacancies shall be filled by promotion has implications beyond those two positions.
That is correct. And so, again, we did play with this. If you want to only take the standing vacancy away for chief of police, we would add more language in there.
Right.
So, we would have to strike out and add. And we can do that. But keep in mind that the more red you see and the more addition you see, the less likely the measure is to pass with the voters.
I hear--
Which is why we came to the decision that the standing vacancy should go away. Because it just, it goes away for the chief of police, and it still leaves the flexibility for the city manager and the HR on alternate levels.
And that's fine for me.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about that. My point is, if we are going down that road, I think we need to tweak the sample measure language yet again to better reflect, proper reflect those larger implications.
Understood. And look forward to working with you then on getting the language.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot of little things that I wanted to point out, but I think from a bigger picture and standpoint, if we're, if the council is interested in just moving forward with working on the police and fire chief, we could put ourselves in a situation where it's only the highest, you know, ranks in both departments that actually have to abide by this requirement, right? And there's a situation where everybody below them will be following some different protocol, where they have to at least serve one year within BPD. So, I think, I think it's worth at least some additional discussion to see if there's a way to find some language to actually nail both down in this setting or in future meetings with the city attorney's office. Wanted to get my colleagues' perspective and also the city attorney's perspective. I was taking a look at the second piece where we're talking about allowing all police officers below the police chief, and actually kind of quickly kind of scribbled down some notes about what I think would make a little bit more sense, because I agree with Ken, that it seems like we're trying to hire people without the appropriate amount of years of experience and qualification. And that's certainly not what we're trying to do. So, here's what I chotted down. Allow all police officers to be eligible for promotion to positions other than police chief with a minimum of three years' experience in a law enforcement department immediately preceding the date of promotion. And I'll go ahead and repeat that one more time. Allow all police officers to be eligible for promotion to positions other than the police chief with a minimum of three years' experience in a law enforcement department immediately preceding the date of promotion. I think that puts it in the affirmative. I think it embraces the fact that we are still trying to, you know, find qualified, experienced individuals to be below the police chief, and also addresses the issue of having one of those years be within BPD and opening it up to other departments in law enforcement throughout the country. That's that. I'm curious to know what my colleagues think. The other thing is, too, I think we do take a stand. I think we make the pro argument for this measure. But I think that it should have something to say about why we're doing this, and it's per the stipulated judgment, and will get us into compliance with that. Because I'll remind myself and everybody in this room that there is no deadline for that stipulated judgment to come to an end. And if we don't address some of these things, we could potentially be kicking the ball down the road, which will cost additional millions of dollars, depending on how many years it takes to actually resolve this thing. So, with that, those are my comments. Curious to know what my colleagues think.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. I don't see any--
No.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to answer the questions, I still feel we should just stick with option one. And I think that there seems to be a consensus that, you know, future changes to the charter probably are necessary and make sense, and, you know, there's been talk of a committee and different things to do. And so, these, the numerous other things can be addressed in the future, and hopefully we would move on that. But I think that because this was part of the stipulated judgment, get it done and then move forward on the other stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So, if we just go with measure A and put that on the ballot, can't we do, you know, council policy or in some other area, can't we do a lot of the things that we're talking about up at the dais?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I guess it really depends on what it is.
What, my concern is, do we want to lock all this stuff into the charter?
Well, certainly, as a city attorney, I would tell you no, right? I would want you to have as much flexibility as you possibly could. And again, what I'm hearing is, I think the council would benefit from hearing from your HR director, and I know that the housing element is going to take some significant time. And so, to answer your question, I think it's going to be important to come back on the 20th, if you're all here, and have the HR director tell you that some of the things you're raising, really, we can, we can deal with through civil service rules, we can deal with in another venue. What we were trying to do is really make the charter, take some of this stuff out of the charter to give you the flexibility that you were looking for. And we were trying to do it in a way that, you know, we didn't take language out and put language in. So, again, going back to what Councilmember Gonzalez was saying, if you want to just take the standing vacancy out for the chief of police, now I have to start adding language, right? I've got a red line and add language in. So, I think I can accomplish what it is that the council may want to accomplish through other mechanisms as opposed to a charter amendment.
Thank you. I would appreciate if we could do that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other requests to speak? I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion, please cash your votes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Reports item 3A, Housing Element Update.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. I would just make a few brief comments, and that the housing element update does not happen very often. It is a significant item. We're not voting on housing element today. We're just providing a report on our approach. And we'll turn time over to Chris Boyle to make some introductions and kick it off.
Thank you, City Manager Clegg, Madam Mayor, Council. Today, we have Ms. Brenna Weatherby here from our consultant, Rincon Consultants Incorporated, to provide us a study session on the housing element and our efforts to adopt our six-cycle housing element. Without further ado, Brenna.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. Again, my name is Brenna Weatherby. I'm Director of Long Range and Environmental Planning with Rincon Consultants. We are the city's consultant for both the Housing Element Update and the Comprehensive General Plan Update, which is taking place right now as well. So, I'm here today to give you a little bit of background on and information about housing elements and the process, and what goes into this update. So, today, I'll be talking about a number of topics, starting off with the housing element, what it covers, and then talking about the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, also referred to as RENA, as well as state legislation that influences housing elements. And then, we'll talk a little bit about this project itself, the housing element schedule, and city council's role on this project. So, I'll start first by talking about the housing element, the document itself. So, the housing element is one of the eight mandatory elements in the city's general plan. The housing element is governed by California Government Code like the general plan, although this element is different in that it's required to be updated every eight years. And it's the only general plan element with that requirement. So, the other general plan elements can be updated as needed. Typically, it's a 10, 15-year process when, or every 10 to 15 years that those are updated. But the housing element is mandated by the state that it is updated every eight years. Now, this follows a pattern that runs throughout the state, so not every jurisdiction is on the same eight-year cycle. So, regions have different eight-year cycles, also referred to as planning periods. So, it's just important to note that the planning period for the Kern County region runs, for this next cycle, runs from 2023 to 2031. So, the deadline for this update for this housing element is December 31st of 2023. So, the housing element covers four broad categories that you'll see here on your screen. So, first off, the preparation of a community profile includes the presentation of socioeconomic demographics, as well as housing stock characteristics, and allows for us to come up with a projected needs analysis in the city. So, what type of housing is needed, where is housing needed? And that's really based on what we see already in the city. The housing element also takes a look at constraints that are present to housing. So, these can be referred to as governmental and non-governmental constraints. So, governmental constraints include things like land use and zoning controls, as well as development fees and city policies that may be in place that could be seen as constraints to housing. While non-governmental constraints include things like the cost of land, availability of land, financing, and environmental impacts. The housing element must also provide information on housing resources across the city. Now, this includes the identification of sites that can be used for future residential development in order to meet the RENA requirement. So, I'll go into RENA more in just a minute. But the important thing to understand here is that the housing element must identify sites, housing sites that can be developed over this next planning period for all economic segments of the community. We also have to look for sites that can be developed for some special needs groups. So, this includes the aging population, persons with disabilities, and emergency shelters, just to name a few. This discussion on housing resources also includes information on programs for the preservation of housing. And finally, the housing element provides an eight-year, or an implementable plan for this next eight-year period. So, this includes the development of goals, policies, and, most importantly, programs that will help encourage residential development over the next-- that will help encourage residential development over the next eight years. The resources to achieve these goals, such as federal and state financing, that's available to builders and cities that are looking to finance residential projects, is also identified in this implementable plan. So why does the city need a housing element? You know, it's one of the questions that we get asked a lot. Do we have to do this? Is it required? This seems like a long process. Is this something that we have to take on? The answer is yes. Failure to meet the state requirements pertaining to housing elements can result in significant penalties. Given the current housing crisis in California, each year, state legislation introduces new bills that increase and expand the penalties for noncompliance as well as imposes additional implications and limits on local controls that affect housing production. So failure to obtain a certified housing element does have potential consequences. So first, under Assembly Bill 101, noncompliance or jurisdictions that fail to timely adopt a housing element could face thousands of dollars of fines per month until HCD determines that they are in compliance with state legislation. In addition, failure to certify a housing element can result in a jurisdiction's general plan being deemed inadequate, which could then result in potential legislation regarding, I'm sorry, potential litigation regarding the validity of land use decisions that have been made during that time that the housing element is in noncompliance. And finally, under Senate Bill 2, jurisdictions that don't have an approved housing element, and by approved, it has to be certified by HCD. So if you don't have an HCD-certified housing element by the deadline, you are unable to apply for certain grant funding. Now, this applies to state grant funding. It does not apply to federal grant funding. And it's grants that stipulate that you have a certified housing element. So I mentioned the term RENA a little earlier. What is RENA? RENA is a mandated process by the state. And the assessment is aimed at quantifying housing needs throughout the state and then within a particular region. So RENA is used in the local planning process to address future housing needs resulting from population employment growth. So the city is currently what's referred, we're currently in what's referred to as the fifth cycle. So you'll hear me refer to the fifth and sixth cycle throughout the rest of this presentation. Right now, the city is in the fifth cycle. The sixth cycle is the next cycle of the housing element. And that's what we are updating the document to be in compliance with. So the sixth cycle is this next year, next eight-year cycle that covers the years 2023 through 2031. So just to give a little background on how the RENA is developed and how it ends up in the hands of local jurisdictions. So this starts at the state level with the California Department of Housing and Community Development, also referred to as HCD. So they develop a methodology to create the RENA allocation for each metropolitan planning organization or MPO. There's 18 MPOs across the state of California. Kern COG is the one that we'll talk more about today, obviously, since that's where the city of Bakersfield is located. So HCD's RENA methodology uses population projections from the Department of Finance as well as population estimates taken from each MPO's regional transportation plan. So once the regional RENA is provided to the COG, then Kern COG has to create their own methodology to determine how their units that they've been assigned by the state will then be assigned to each jurisdiction. So you'll see here on your screen, it starts with HCD. Then that gets pushed down to Kern COG. And then Kern COG comes up with this methodology that distributes these units out to the jurisdictions within their purview. So the methodology that Kern COG develops must be approved by HCD. And then that's when those units, the final numbers, are provided to the jurisdictions. So 57,650 units have been allocated by HCD to the Kern COG region. So it's important to note here that we're now in the point of the process where Kern COG has developed a draft methodology that was approved last month. And then this now is on its way back to HCD for HCD to approve that methodology. And once HCD approves that methodology, then the final RENA numbers will be distributed to each jurisdiction. So the numbers that I'm going to talk about today are still draft for all intents and purposes because HCD could come back and say that they don't agree with the methodology. But we have to move forward with something. So we're moving forward with the draft number as of now. So Kern COG's methodology for distribution of the six-cycle RENA is based on these five RENA objectives. The increase of housing supply and mix of housing types to promote infill equality in the environment, to ensure a jobs-housing balance, to promote regional income parity, and to affirmatively further fair housing, where if you hear me refer to AFFH, that's what I'm referring to. And it's the duty to affirmatively further or to further promote fair housing practices in the state. So Kern COG's draft methodology is pretty nuanced. I'm going to try to run through a little bit of it here today so you can at least get some background on what goes into creating the RENA number. It's worthwhile to kind of have a little bit of understanding just to know how they've come up with the number that will eventually be presented to Bakersfield. So first, Kern COG started by determining a base allocation for each jurisdiction. So to do this, each jurisdiction's household growth projections were taken from the regional transportation plan. And each jurisdiction's percentage share of anticipated regional growth was multiplied by the regional, the region's total allocation to obtain the individual base RENA allocations that you see here in the right in green. So that's the number that they started with, just basically looking at the RTP and saying, okay, based on this percentage of growth, we're going to multiply that number by the total number that the state has given us, just to come up with a base RENA allocation. So that base number for Bakersfield was 37,461 units. Next, in Kern COG's methodology, they took a look at the existing distribution of household income. And they created what's referred to as an income equity adjustment factor. So the adjustment factor was then applied to the difference between each jurisdictional household income distribution and the income distribution for the entire county. So the goal here of this piece was really to attempt to balance household income distribution across the county to promote a mixture of housing types so that you're not seeing one type of housing or one income group congregated within one community within the county. So back to the RENA objectives here. Once Kern COG applied those two, those two measures that I just spoke about, they found that they still really needed to take a look at Measures 3 and 5 here, which is the jobs-housing balance piece as well as the fair housing piece in order to better distribute the RENA across the county and to meet the objectives that they were looking at. To address jobs-housing balance, a factor was developed to consider the existing ratio of low-wage workers to units that are affordable to low-wage workers. So jurisdictions that were found to have a higher-than-average ratio received an upward adjustment of lower-income RENA units. And those with a lower-than-average ratio received a downward adjustment. So the goal here is really to encourage jurisdictions with higher ratios of low-wage workers to provide affordable housing within their communities to keep those workers from having to live in one community and then commute to another community to go to work. Kern COG also determined that there was a need to develop a factor to address fair housing. So this factor addresses the need to address disparities in housing and disparities in housing needs and access to opportunities by determining if a jurisdiction provides more or fewer housing units within high-opportunity areas versus trends seen on the countywide level. So through the application of these factors previously discussed, Kern COG either increased or decreased the jurisdictional share of lower-income RENA allocations. So you'll see here that the application of factors initially increased Bakersfield's share of the lower-income RENA by over 4,200 units. However, what Kern COG then found is that they actually had increased the lower-income share of units across the entire county. And they were accounting for more lower-income units than the state had assigned. So they adjusted everyone's allocations once again to account for the actual RENA number that was provided by the state for the Kern COG region. Through implementation of the complete methodology, Kern COG, like I mentioned, released their draft methodology, which distributes units to each jurisdiction, as you'll see here. You'll see here that the allocation for Bakersfield is 37,461 units. Now, this is the number of units that Bakersfield will need to plan for to accommodate by December of 2023. And it represents approximately 65% of the region's growth. Now, I'll mention here that these units, the housing element does not require that these units be constructed. The housing element requires that the city identify where these units could go. But the city is not building these units through this process. They're simply identifying where these units could go if a developer chooses to build them over this next eight-year period. So again, these are draft numbers. And there's still this final step in the process with HCD certifying the methodology. So that's why you'll see the blank right-hand column here on your screen. Once HCD does approve the methodology, the units will be presented to each jurisdiction within these categories. So to break down these categories, extremely low is categorized as housing that is affordable for households that earn 29% or less of the AMI. I won't go through all the percentages. You can see them here. But breaking these down, above moderate then is a separate category. And that's 100%, 120%, I'm sorry, of AMI. So as of today, the way it's broken down within the draft methodology, Kern COG has stated that Bakersfield will receive a lower-income RENA allocation of 18,211 units. Now, that number will be further broken down into the extremely low, very low, and low categories. And then the Kern COG methodology has stipulated that Bakersfield will receive a higher-income RENA allocation of 19,250 units. And that number will be further broken down into the moderate and above-moderate categories that you'll see here on your screen. So again, once finalized, these are the units that Bakersfield will have to plan for during the 2023-2031 time period. So how will Bakersfield plan for this growth? So one piece of the housing element is referred to as the site inventory. And that's what we use to identify locations where these units could be constructed. So we first, it's a step-by-step process. We first take a look at pending or approved projects. So residential development projects that have an application on file, if they've been approved or if they've talked to the city. If a developer has spoken with the city with good intent, that the city can realistically assume that this developer will come forward with an application. Those units can be counted towards the RENA allocation. They just cannot have pulled building permits by July 1st of 2023. After taking that number off the top of the RENA allocation, we take a look at sites that are already zoned for residential development and see where we can accommodate some of that. Where are there vacant sites that are zoned for residential development that have not yet been constructed? And then finally, you know, sometimes rezoning is required to meet RENA. We haven't finished our site inventory analysis yet. I would say we're right in the middle of it. But we do anticipate that rezoning will be required in Bakersfield. So we'll identify the sites that we believe are appropriate for each level of density. And I've got this density number up here because for low-income and very-low-income units, to plan for those, HCD looks at densities. And densities for those sites that can accommodate those units need to be able to accommodate at least 25 dwelling units to the acre. So we'll identify the sites that we believe are appropriate for all income levels. And then the housing element will contain a program which requires rezoning of these sites within a certain timeframe. So besides complying with RENA, this six-cycle has become a lot more complicated for housing element preparation and development because of the amount of state legislation that has been passed recently pertaining to housing elements and housing policy. So in this table, you'll see some of the more significant legislation. And I'm going to direct your attention to a few in particular. So first, SB 330, also known as the Housing Crisis Act, introduced an expedited review process for residential development projects. And it prohibits cities from imposing growth caps or moratoriums on housing projects or plans. SB 35 is another one that's received a lot of attention, also referred to as the Affordable Housing Streamlined Approval. So under this piece, if HCD finds that a jurisdiction's RENA goals are not being satisfied, SB 35 requires cities or counties to streamline review and approval of eligible affordable housing projects by providing a ministerial approval process. And this exempts projects from environmental review under SEQA in some cases and also exempts them from the public hearing process. So with projects under SB 35, development standards are the one place where cities still have teeth. The projects under SB 35 still need to go through a development review process. SB 229 has made numerous changes to law pertaining to the development of accessory dwelling units, also referred to as ADUs or sometimes called granny flats. And changes may need to be made to the city's zoning ordinance to comply with state law pertaining to ADUs. AB 215 is a new piece of legislation that was just passed in September of last year. So this bill pertains to the housing element process itself. It requires the draft housing element to be available for a public review period of no less than 30 days, followed by a period to address any public comments received. That period, that period to address comments can be no less than 10 working days. And all this needs to take place before HCD will accept the draft element for review. And AB 1398, also a new piece of legislation approved in September of last year, has changed the timing for any rezoning efforts that may be required. I mentioned earlier that we thought rezoning would be required. So it used to be that cities, jurisdictions had three years to complete their rezoning efforts. efforts. This piece of legislation changes that. So if a jurisdiction's housing element is found, not found to be in compliance with state law within 120 days of the certification deadline, then all rezoning must occur within one year of that statutory deadline. So where I mentioned jurisdictions previously had three years, it's now one year if they don't obtain a certified housing element within 120 days of that deadline. So that's a lot to take in about housing elements and how they work and what goes into them. So I just wanted to give a little bit of information on the sixth-cycle update. This is the general timeline for the project. We've already kicked the project off. We started working with staff in November of last year, which I will say is early in the process. Bakersfield has started at a good time, where we've worked with a number of jurisdictions that aren't on top of things, and it makes it a lot more difficult to meet these deadlines in all of the state legislation. We started with taking a look at the city's existing housing element to see which policies and programs could still remain in play, if there were programs and policies that may no longer be applicable. And then we're also currently working, as I mentioned, to identify sites suitable for future residential development. So you'll see here too on your screen, kind of in that lime-green color, the public engagement plan for the process has also kicked off. So today's study session is just part of the overall public engagement plan for the project, as well as the public engagement plan for the city's comprehensive general plan update. The two projects are happening concurrently, and so we've combined engagement efforts on those to make sure that we reach as much of the community as we can. First, community workshops were held a couple of weeks ago, and more are scheduled in the coming months, as is the release of a online survey. As I mentioned as well, HCD has timelines for the review of draft documents. So right now, we're looking to release the draft housing element for public review in early 2023, with a submittal to HCD for their review sometime spring, early summer of 2023. HCD will then take 90 days to review that draft, and they'll come back with comments, and we will address those comments and proceed forward to planning commission and city council hearings taking place right now, scheduled for fall of 2023, with the goal to adopt the housing element and submit and obtain HCD certification by December 31 of 2023. So with all this said, it's important to learn a little bit about and acknowledge your role as a city council member during the process. We find a lot of times, I mean, in addition to the decision-making, the document will ultimately be approved by you before it's submitted to HCD for certification. But we find a lot of times that the city council members are sort of a neighborhood sounding board. Someone may hear something about a housing element process or be confused about how RENA works, and so council members are often that sounding board. They'll receive questions and comments, and so hopefully, the information in this presentation will give you a little bit of background, that you can respond a little more easily to some of those questions and comments. And hopefully, this also gives you a little information about the public engagement process so that you can direct your neighbors and other community members to the city's general plan update website, where they can pose additional questions and reach out to us as well through that website. So this concludes my presentation. I'd like to thank everyone for their time, and I would like to open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherby. Do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Your total number, 37,461. How many available? I remember back in the boom, everybody said, "We still have 35,000 tentative map lots." What number of available zoning lots do we have now? Anybody know about what that number is?
If memory serves me, and we've been doing some review on the tentative maps that we have in play right now, we have 89 maps, and if I'm not mistaken, it's something like 14,000 available lots.
Okay, and that's just single-family lots?
Those would be single-family development lots, yes.
Doesn't count multifamily. Does the, we have a CC zone in different places in the city, and that can be used for mixed-use, R4, are we counting that as possible affordable housing?
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. That's a good question, and to that I would answer, the short answer would be yes, but we're also exploring opportunities to perhaps introduce new mixed-use zones that would perhaps provide additional inventory of housing within the matrix that the city currently has.
So our R1 zoning with the new ADU laws and state laws could be used to build affordable housing, but you can't count that because of the 25 unit per acre? Or can you get to 25 units an acre with R1++?
Well, I don't think that the R1 zone allows for that level of density, so for pure planning purposes, no, we would not utilize sites within the R1 zone towards the RENA allocation for those lower-income units because it can't meet that density, but maybe I'm...
So along those lines, our current density for low-density residential maxes out at 7.26 units per acre. Now, you could do, every one of those homes could have a, an ADU as well as a junior ADU, and we would come in at about 21 units. Currently though, to be honest, council member, our concerns are that we're not really using our R1 densities anywhere close to the maximum allowable 7.26 units per acre. So, short answer, yes, we could do more ADUs in our, in our single-family residential zones. Long answer, we still wouldn't be able to qualify those as within low, lower-income categories because we still wouldn't be able to do more than 25 units an acre.
And just one last thing, just to be clear, I mean, this 37,000 works out to be 4,600 a year, and we're building maybe 1,500 a year now?
Last year, we composed mixed, pardon me, both multifamily and single-family, we eclipsed 2,500 homes, and that's the most homes we had generated over the fifth-cycle years. It is an extreme challenge to build at that, at that number of units over the lifespan of the sixth cycle.
And if I may, council member, I'll take the opportunity to make a couple of points related to RENA numbers as a non-land-use expert, but in the policy realm, there, we're not alone in Bakersfield. There, you know, all cities in the state essentially have RENA goals that are very aspirational and not very attainable. And so there's been a lot of conversation in League of Cities and amongst others that, you know, are the RENA numbers those stretch goals, or is there, you know, a, any repercussions for not meeting those? And as stated earlier, in current law, there is not. As long as we've made plans and are making efforts towards those numbers, there is a fear that if legislation was sponsored that would hold cities accountable to those RENA numbers, that it would be very problematic because no one has been given RENA numbers that are very attainable. So again, just by comparisons and benchmarks, we're there with everybody else. In fact, Bakersfield does better than most in creating new units, and there are many cities that are, you know, would struggle much more to meet their RENA goals, but as a policy issue, there's awareness that those are really not achievable numbers in, you know, today's environment.
And it's really about us having the available lots. I mean, the market will decide how many actually gets built.
Correct, that is how policy is written today. Again, if we saw some of that state policy change, as we continue to see the state edge in on local land use policy issues, that would be something that would be problematic, and we would raise to the council and take a position on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one point of clarification. When were the RENA goals implemented, and is this the first cycle that cities are grappling with those goals?
Are you referring to the five goals that I went over in developing methodology? Yeah, I'm not as familiar as if those goals have been in play for other jurisdictions across the state. So those are the goals given by HCD. These are the things that you need to tackle with your methodology. You need to address these issues. So those issues relate to the things that need to also be addressed in the housing element, so they start early by addressing those issues within the RENA methodology, and then additionally in the housing element as well. I don't know the answer to the question about previous cycles, if that RENA methodology has changed or not.
Yeah, I...
If I might elaborate as well, thank you. One of those goals was to affirmatively further fair housing, and that law has been passed over the fifth cycle. I believe that's a 2019 law that's being applied with the sixth cycle, and so that goal wasn't necessarily topical during fifth cycle during adoption back in 2015.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Are there any other requests to speak? Don't see any? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Motion to receive and file.
If a motion, please catch your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, I don't see any other business listed. Are you aware of anything?
That was our final item on this agenda, Mayor.
Thank you, and so we stand adjourned at 4:53.